Let's make it beginning, guys. Start with the prayer, followed by the pledge. Well, thank God we look to you this morning and we're mindful and thankful of our blessings that you've sharted upon our county and our constituents. We pray for wisdom today as we make decisions for the county. We pray for direction and we pray for those that are sailors, soldiers, and airmen that keep us safe and those that wear badge and uniform, watch over them and keep them. Watch over all those that have aches and pains and those who are hurting this day. We pray Christ in you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about the small delay, so we are underway. Minutes, first thing on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero, okay. Federal number six per calendar year two thousand nineteen totals two hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. We had a total of a hundred and seventy-three claims totaling two hundred thirteen thousand fifty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero, okay. Move right to Scott.
Good morning. Good morning. Making somewhat brief here, uh, we're up to a hundred and twenty-four inmates as of this morning in jail, which is, uh...
It's a record.
I don't know if it's a record, but it's quite high. We've been above a hundred since the first of the year, usually right around a hundred and fifteen or so, but, uh, yeah, all last week we were in the one-twenty's, um, trying to, uh, seem to be spearheading, uh, this last month. We, we had quite a few drug arrests. Um, I think we've been up in those numbers when we've done our DTEC, uh, task forces, did, you know, a drug bust of twenty to twenty or so people at one time. Uh, usually we prepare in advance for that, but, uh, yeah, we're, right now, we're, we're kind of busting at the seams as far as, uh, space. Um, definitely not a good situation as far as, uh, with a ninety-four-bed jail, uh, you can do the math as far as how many overcapacity that is. Um, so, you know, when you throw classifications in there, males and females, um, I've, I've brought this up with, uh, different commissioners at times as far as to properly classify inmates within our facility, uh, you, the DOC, uh, and jail standards recommend that you run at about eighty percent of your capacity, so to properly classify both males and females and all the classifications, that would mean we're looking at numbers of about seventy-five inmates, so we're clearly, uh, almost fifty inmates above, uh, that recommended number, so, um, so, yeah, so we're dealing with several, uh, issues as far as space, making sure that, uh, we classify them correctly, and, um, something to, to talk about with, uh, council is, is our medical. We, uh, had to up our medical services, you know, just for your information, as far as the hours that, uh, we have medical within the facility, obviously more inmates, more medical needs and those type of things that, uh, we have to take care of on top of that to, to keep everything functioning correctly and, and, uh, to deal with what we're doing. But as far as facility, uh, we're doing good as far as that, everything's functioning fine. Um, we did, just kind of a heads up, we did order new, uh, lights for our helipad that's out there, uh, the last couple winters has really, uh, torn them apart, um, but that's something that we're gonna, to use some commissary money for to replace, so those are coming here this spring and we'll have, uh, all that redone out there as well. But, uh, yeah, so a hundred and twenty-four inmates out of that number, looks like we have about ninety-five of those are pretrial, uh, that number's up just prob, uh, mostly because of the new arrests, uh, twelve of those are F-sixes and then nine DOC, so, um, so we're doing our part, we've been working with the courts, uh, trying to streamline the process of, of the pretrial stuff. We are a pretrial jail, uh, just so that people know that, it kind of seems to be a misnomer, everybody always wants to know why we have so many pretrial people in our jail, but we are a pretrial jail, that's really what a jail is built for, is for pretrial, and if they do get sentenced, then they go off to prison, so, um, that number will never go away, uh, and so every time we arrest anybody, they're considered pretrial until their, their case is either, uh, taken care of, dismissed, whatever it may be, uh, or they're sentenced, so, so we will always have pretrial members. Obviously, the F-sixes is not a, you know, that's something that's changed and we have to house those instead of them going to DOC, but, um, there's other counties that are our sides that are dealing with, uh, upwards of thirty or forty, uh, F-sixes, um, Huntington being one of them, I know, uh, has a larger F-six number than we do, however, we do get paid for that, um, for the F-sixes that get housed, so that's part of the DOC, between DOC and F-six, once they're sentenced, we do get paid, uh, the standard rate, uh, for that, which, if you're not aware, that is in legislation, they've been trying to get that bumped up from thirty-five dollars a day to fifty-five dollars a day, so, um, it's been at thirty-five dollars for over thirty years, so I think it's about...
We heard thirty-seven fifty and forty bucks.
Yeah, there's all kinds of, uh, they're talking about doing either...
That's not worth passing.
Yeah, so they're, they're looking at, uh, increments of five dollars a year, they're looking at doing the whole thing, we don't know yet, so that's something that the Sheriff's Association has been extremely involved in, uh, down at the State House, trying to get that bumped up, um, because thirty-five bucks a day just is not covering what it actually takes when you throw medical and food and, and all the things that go along with the building and those type of things, so that is a dire need that, uh, that is being felt all across, uh, the state as far as per diem, uh, for housing them, so hopefully we can get some action, uh, taking place in there, so...
It looks like the bottleneck is probably the court system getting them processed through and efficiently.
Well, that, you know, obviously to arrest them and put them in jails is, is somewhat a short process, it's the, it's, yeah, to get them through the court system, to get them on the court calendar, uh, to get them bonded out, um, you know, there's, there's several things, uh, that can take place. I can say that it is a lot faster than it used to be, um, in, you know, from previous years, but we are constantly in connection, I email the judges', uh, numbers for inmates, what's pretrial, what's not, um, every Monday morning, so that they're aware of those numbers as well, and we've been trying to streamline things with the public defenders, uh, and with the courts and with community corrections as far as what we can do to help that alleviate that process, so, um, and again, as you can see, there's, if we threw work release in there right now, we, I don't even know where we would, where we would put them at this point, that seems to be something that was...
That was another question, our mayor's commissioners, or something about the state Supreme Court, starting twenty twenty is going to do something, have you been brought up to speak?
No, I have not.
I'll talk to you all fair enough.
Okay, so, yeah, we're, we're continuing to all communicate, uh, between the courts and, and us in, in ways that we can, uh, fortunately, uh, when that happens, I can't control the, necessarily those numbers all the time, uh, I can, we can arrest, we can put in jail, but I don't get, I don't get the luxury of, and, and quite frankly, I don't want that responsibility of deciding who gets, uh, let out of jail and who doesn't, so that's, that's, they're awarded the due process in the court system and they get to decide that, so, uh, other than that, everything's functioning pretty good as far as building and those type of things, so, okay?
Appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Josh, we have Dust Day bid?
Yeah. Want to open?
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you've probably seen or heard, gravel roads are being graded, um, as we speak, we're on top of that several times so far this spring, we're about halfway through our township stone, um, so we'll continue that here for the next two or three weeks, um, running around on the, uh, chip and seal roads and doing cold mix, hitting the main potholes and things of that sort, um, I'm getting oiled this morning, actually, so here in the next couple of days, our duripatch will fire up so we can start hitting some of the worst spots, we have several notes, crossings from last year that have settled, um, you know, intersections, things of that sort that'll need addressed, so we'll, we're on top of that, so all roads, not just gravel, we're, we're on top of potholes and things of that sort. Um, our sign guy's been real busy through the winter with wind and everything else, a lot of signs get bent up and leaned over, so he's been real busy running around trying to get things straight and back in order and replaced as needed. Um, a lot of notes for our rotary ditcher and our backhoe crew, um, just this winter with the couple times of freezing and thawing and, I mean, we just, we may end up renting a backhoe again this year like we did a couple years ago, just to get caught up, we're gonna see what we can do with the one we have naturally first, see how, how long it takes to get caught up, but, uh, I don't want to leave those notes lay open, I'd like to get them done, but the pile is growing every day, um, there's calls in, our guys, and especially this time so big because all of our trucks are out on all of our roads and all the townships, therefore they're, they're seeing everything, so every day, there's two or three notes come in my office from the truck drivers that notice stuff throughout the day, so we'll stay on top of that with ditching notes and, uh, backhoe notes, but it's just standard spring, it's very busy, and it's gonna get worse, and then we have your stuff.
Okay. You've got a quotation for Dust Day?
Yep.
It's got a bid bond, but it's not actually a bid, they don't have any of the other bid forms, and it says it's just our quote.
Okay.
And it's from the Clint Group, it's the only one.
So, what, you don't have the Form ninety-five or anything like that?
Just a, it just has a bid bond, but none of the bid forms or non collusion affidavits. Take another advisement?
Yeah, bring him back next meeting?
Yeah, we're after the next meeting. The other ones were your asphalt materials and one and only one from asphalt materials Inc. Got your non collusion affidavits, your bid form.
So we only got one for Dust Day?
Yeah. Which is, has to be expected. So you can hold on to that, I'll take this one.
Okay.
So I'll take this under advisement till next meeting.
Okay.
Which, two weeks, correct?
Correct.
Yep. That one can, yeah, Lisa can hold on to that one. Any no?
Good job.
All right. Thanks. All right.
Morning.
Morning.
A lot of different papers are in front of the board for today, so I'll start with the, start with the easy parts.
In case anybody missed it.
In case anybody missed it, the Wells County was awarded Community Crossings money for the twenty nineteen one application, that, uh, total award was for nine hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents, covers five different projects for us. Bridge six, which is down on seven hundred south, uh, just east of two hundred east, bridge fifty-six on six hundred west, north of the thousand south, bridge three oh three, which is on a thousand southwest of County Route Fifty East, and then bridges three hundred and three oh one, those are the ones over the eight mile ditch over, uh, Mill Street and Fever Street, so five different bridge projects, three replacements and two rehabilitations, so congratulations, everybody, we nearly got a maximum award, but it was everything we asked for, so that works out well.
Great.
Well, I'm looking to advertise those projects, and actually, there's two different pieces, you've got two different clips and bundles, I've got the end dot contracts for all five projects that I will need to get your signatures on, and I would like to advertise these projects, uh, put them out on April eleventh and eighteenth for a bids being due on May sixteenth, that's a week after end dot, an end dot letting, so all five projects, we just advertise them all together as individual projects, we'll just have one big mass bid opening then after that on May sixteenth, so I need kind of a motion for those two pieces and then...
All signatures or just mine or...
I think you'll need, everybody's signature's on the one sheet, which is the approval of the plans to go up to bid, and I think it's just Blake's and then it'll be attested by Lisa in blue ink, and I got two copies there for you, so we can do all that, all the signing afterwards, but, so moved.
Second.
Aye.
I will actually drop those off within that later on today then, so that'll be in the works, um, I need to be revising the bridge asset management plan, obviously, with the five awards, it takes five projects, they've been sitting on shelves, off the shelf, and now essentially I have no projects essentially waiting to be done, which is gonna lead me into one of the other pieces I'll have to get to here later, but I'm certainly shuffling the asset management plan around now with so many projects in the works, so I'll keep you all kind of apprised of what we're looking to do, man, we've been kind of hoping for this, but obviously, fingers crossed. Um, just an update, bridge one twelve project is gonna be starting this week, actually, with the closure of the road, so unfortunately, thankfully, there's nobody north of the road on, on the Wells County side, but everybody to the south can't go north anymore, they're gonna start working on that bridge here shortly, so, so it'll start up this week. Uh, the other community crossings projects that I anticipated starting this week, three D with the rain and the cold, they had begged off, kind of anticipated this and said, we wanna start, we're gonna do other projects first, so it's gonna delay us to probably a June start, hopefully I can get them out there earlier, but it's not a, we're not in a crisis as far as scheduling, so, it was something we gave them latitude to do, so they're gonna wait a little bit to start on the curve correction and the bridge建成 by Austin, so, just kind of an update for you on that. Um, the consultant qualifications, County Road, or County Home Road and four fifty east, the qualifications are due by April eighteenth, so I'm waiting for those letters from consultants, I have a number of them communicate with me their interest or their schedule as far as what they're looking at. Just a reminder, that project's not scheduled to start construction until twenty twenty-four, so if anybody kind of sees this and wonders, when are we gonna start, we're just right now in the consultant selection process, we've got a lot of work that's gonna be done, certainly I hope to move that project forward faster, but, um, at this point, really, it's just kind of a waiting game to kind of get consultants selected and move forward, so our money that we're awarded is twenty twenty-four. I do have for you, uh, agreement from USI, says County Bridge three oh four, the White Bridge, it's four fifty east over the Wabash River, I'm planning to pursue community crossings matching grant funds as soon as possible, um, depending on, in talking to Ben and, and USI, I'd like to try to get the, a design of that project for rehabilitation done yet this year and try to apply a year earlier, twenty twenty, the first call for that project. Depending on how that works, I've got two other bridge designs in the works right now, Bridge one twenty-one, which is just north of Toxen, and a bridge, oh goodness sakes, ninety-nine, which is on the Hooger Highway. The Hooger Highway project has to be done in light of the local tracks project, but if I can get the bridge, uh, three oh four done and in that call, I'll be in a good position as far as trying to maximize our match for next year, because with the two projects I have in the queue, we certainly won't maximize our eligible funds.
Unlike you and I spoke last week, I mean, we need to get something in our, the queue.
With all, with as much award as we had, I don't have a backlog of work really set up, so at this point, without this project, the maximum award that we could see in twenty twenty would be probably half a million dollars or less, uh, depending on what those projects, because one's just a rehab and the other one is a replacement with a little bit of roadwork, so I'm trying to maximize our, our funds.
Right.
Yeah.
I've got some other projects I'd like to look at, but I wanna hold off to, on the, the Lit Bridge account until, cause I got three projects in construction, that's my contingency allowance money. Once those projects are done, then I'll probably try to get some more bridge designs in the works, and so I'll be coming to you in October, November with contracts. This one, because it's kind of key for potential funding, we know we wanna do the project, it needs done, we've been asking about it for years now, and this is the funding avenue that the state's directed us toward, I think it's just, it's key for us to do that. Now, it is a larger contract, um, we're looking at survey and design work for this at ninety thousand dollars, there is a night-to-exceed amount of about fifty-eight thousand dollars, so that would be hourly for construction and bidding services, so construction inspection and bidding services, since this is a contingent project on funding, that really wouldn't come in to play in two thousand nineteen.
So we're only looking at ninety right now?
We only need to allocate the ninety right now, and there's more than a penalty within the Lit Bridge account to cover that, so, I'm comfortable with that, and USI isn't, we're not obligated to spend that additional fifty-eight until the project's funded.
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Appreciate that, thank you.
That's just for me to sign.
That's, I believe, just for you to sign. And Lisa was attested, yep. I have a utility permit, uh, AP consultant permit for buried fiber to their peaking plant. I have a utility permit, AP consultant permit for buried fiber to their peaking plant in South Keystone. Looking at their fiber lines, it sounds like Topon Jar, their plan was to bury the lines about four to five feet deep direction of boring it. They've added sections in township so that that can be reported, but I wouldn't recommend approving a long utility permit.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And just a final note, I'll be starting the Pacer ratings this week. Hopefully, Thursday, I'll be out there, hit or miss through April, while my schedule clears up, and in May, I'll be doing about twice a week, driving the roads. Hopefully, by the end of May, I'll be done with the rating and then I can finish up the asset management plans, and those are a requirement for us to get additional community crossings matching grant money, so I need to get those turned in. Will be key for me to turn those in for our 2020 application, so.
Great.
A little bit more time for us at this point to finish it up, but certainly, I want to have a, a good plan together so we go to state. And something I don't have on my list, but I wanted to at least kind of make mention of it, is that NDOT is having a state transportation improvement plan meeting in Fort Wayne. I would encourage anybody who's able to go, it's the Fort Wayne meeting, and don't go across the state. They're actually going to have a meeting in Fort Wayne, Harrison Hill Elementary School, Wednesday, April 10th, at 5:00 to 7:00 PM. I'm planning on going. I'm going to try to encourage the state to do certain state facility improvements that will benefit Wells County, and try to make sure that whatever long-term plan, because it's part of the reform for federal highway to NDOT, and so they're doing public hearings all across the state, and this is one of them, so if anybody can be there, certainly I'd encourage it. Public is certainly welcome, they're trying to get that, but I'm going to go to BAP for Wells County to try to encourage the state to spend more on their facilities here, so.
Okay, cool.
I've got nothing, no other comments at this point, so, thank you very much.
Here's all your paperwork.
Oh, goodness, I'll take what I can of those and we'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Molly and Company.
Molly? Thanks. I'll give her one.
I'm Molly Hoag from Citizens Against Drug Abuse, also known as KETA, and I have-
Jade Glover, I'm the president of KETA.
Welcome.
And what you have in front of you is our annual spreadsheet for our annual report. Our funds come from fees collected from arrests made in Wells County for alcohol, drug and tobacco, well, it wouldn't be tobacco, but alcohol and drug offenses. And this year, we had an interesting scenario. If you look at the top, it tells how many fees were, what the fees were this year. We had a few dollars left over from last year, and then the total requested, the $16,143.57 is actually less than what we collected, which is very rare. I don't know in my history if there's, that's ever been the case, so this year was definitely different. You can see each of the categories, we have a category of education prevention, treatment[1054.23][1054.23]intervention and judicial, and then the other is just our administration. And the state requires that we spend a minimum of 25% in the three main categories, education prevention, treatment intervention and judicial. So that amount is $4,443.62. So in each category, you can see the totals of what has been requested for each of those. And in treatment intervention and judicial, we did not meet that minimum requirement because of the requirement, or because of the request being less than what we had total this year. So at the bottom, you can see we have $1,600, 1630 and 93 cents remaining, and our plan this year is to wait till mid-year and open up the grant cycle again and see if we can find an opportunity in treatment intervention and judicial to spend the remaining requirement of the minimum. We do scrutinize each of the grants, even though we had less requested than what we had, we still make sure that they qualify and that they meet the requirements of our comprehensive plan. The state has also a filter for us to make sure that we're meeting the requirements of those grants, and this year, they all did meet the requirements, so we were actually able to fully fund each of the requests this year as they were requested. Anything I'm forgetting? I don't think so. Do you have any questions?
No.
Not specific?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good plan, thank you.
Exactly, thank you. All right. Move to month on your boards.
I have two requests for the Washington Main Commons events. One is for a benefit for Connor and Will for April 13th, and the other one is for the shred event for the solid waste district, so I just need your signature. That is May 11th, from 9:00 to noon.
Okay, so motion to approve use of the Washington Commons for a benefit on 4/13 and for shred event on 5/11.
Correct.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
And then just the monthly reports, that's all I have.
Bring something up on the, the road agreement, just as general as we're going to table that, or? Traffic study reimbursement?
Oh. We had, we had it advertised for a traffic study reimbursement in regards to 600 East? Is that right? 500 East, West, I'm sorry, 500 West. We are going to take that under advisement, give it more consideration and do some more investigation before we bring it back for any type of public decision and comment, so.
Yeah, currently, I've, I've taken some public input on that, and it's, do some investigating work, as Blake said, so I appreciate everyone sharing their concerns with me, so thank you very much.
As commissioners, have a couple of things. One is our plaza problem, and we've got our funds in check, went through Lisa and everything. I feel that with what we have on schedule, we can make it work. Council has asked us to use seed money for it, and it's allocated. There's a couple small, I got one this morning regarding our hydro or our heat in the concrete at the entrance, because our plaza in the entrance goes to the south from the north and does not see daylight during the winter, therefore, we think that's going to be vital to have that included. That was an alternate of $33,000, we just need to verify that amount and equipment that's going to be used. I think it was publicized it was going to be electric, but it's not, it's in the concrete water, so just need to verify that, but I think from our standpoint, I'll ask for comments or questions or anything, but I think it would be a wise thing to move forward with that and give the green light so the project can get underway.
I think for clarification, we are talking about the Wells County portion of the property on this courthouse.
Yes.
We're not including any of the left in this side of the plaza.
Yeah, so from the current alley to the west is left in now, that ours is strictly for the county portion.
First, on the plaza, the city did convey the former hideaway property to the county, and if you recall last commissioners' meeting, the commissioners adopted a resolution and also signed a deed to revitalization. We had to first get the deed to the city before we could record that, you can't convey what you don't own yet, so those things have happened, so those deeds have been recorded and it's now owned by Wells County Revitalization, Inc. With respect to the commissioners' desires regarding looking for a site for the possible construction of a new county garage, we will, the commissioners will present to county council tomorrow night a proposed resolution, which is the first step in the process for the public buying land. You first have to have the fiscal body adopt a resolution, so we will submit that to council tomorrow evening. The, the next step discussed was then acquiring an option on this property to do its due diligence investigation regarding suitability for a site, and I have drafted an option agreement and shared that with commissioners, so I think if you're, if you have no further questions for me on that and you're fine with that, then that could be a resolution, I mean, that could be the option agreement that we will submit to the present owner, and if you approve that, and it's now public, then I can share that with council too, and if they have questions over, we'll, you know, what we discussed in executive session, so.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Aye. So we need a resolution number, so the council has it, or is it strictly for the council?
The council's their resolution.
It's their resolution.
Yeah, it's their resolution.
Motion to approve our resolution. Okay, gotcha.
All you need to do is approve that option so we can go right forward.
Gotcha.
Also, assuming that council passes the resolution, as the purchasing agent, the commissioners would designate the two appraisers to appraise the property, because by law, the county can't pay any more than the average of the two appraisals, and I've discussed with the commissioners, lists of qualified individuals, the county's had some experience, at least during my period of service, in, in selling and buying real estate, so we've suggested that Joe Wetrick and Kent Springer be asked to appraise the property. I've talked with Joe Wetrick and he's accepted, I've not heard back from Kent, but I've sent both of them email to show them the, the property that the commissioners are interested in, so again, assuming council passes that, if, if the commissioners wish to select those two individuals as the appraisers, then we're ready to tell.
Do we want to have an alternate appointment at this stage, or just wait and see if we get the second person to-
If you wish, I guess-
I think we have a third person.
People we've used before, Neil Worden and Rita Gabriel, we used for the towns.
If Kent would decline, then I would just move into one of the other two, just to keep the process.
Neil maybe is a more local person.
Okay, so a motion to move forward with the two that we have started left and use Neil as the alternate.
I would second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What do I have?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
Am I announcing where that site is, or are they available tonight?
Uh, no, the, well, it would be for council to designate, the property is east of the courting plant, approximately, a little less than 20 acres.
Audience wide open, any comments, questions?
Like, we don't make official chinkles as the Logan on the plaza project.
Does it need to be in a motion?
Yeah, that should be in a motion.
I've not seen the, I've not seen the bids.
The bids?
Is that what you're saying?
Part Reinhardt was the-
But we'll slow you down with your decision on Wednesday's meeting?
I'd make, I'd just make a motion, approve pending Roy looking that over.
Turn it up a little bit.
So Michael can keep moving forward.
I've looked at it.
Yeah, I know.
I would support chinkles, so.
Yeah, just more of a formality at this point than the next one, so you have some verification on that?
On favor for you?
Yes.
We'll get, we'll have all that information.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah, a lot of stuff going on in the background, so.
All in, you, okay, we have the skin version of all of this.
Okay, I mean, you told me a number, but I, I don't know that I've actually seen, yeah.
Motion, we adjourn.
Second.
We're done. Appreciate it, thank you, everyone.